Please take our seats. Please take your seats. Please take your seats. Thank you. The meeting is now called to order. We'll return with the reply in response to public comments. If the council would allow, I'd like to say a few words first. Mrs. Bitner, if you'll start the time clock, I'd like to be sure and stay within my allotted time. In response to concerns about the city, I would like to reiterate some of the points that were made this evening. We're seeing a significant increase in residential building permits this year. Residents have talked to me about selling their home in one day's time this month. We're seeing the beginning of new multiple offer environments in real estate sales in Troy. That's how property values increase when demand exceeds supply. There are new construction projects going up all over this town. Our library is open on Saturdays this year, with my future goal being seven-day-a-week library operations to the benefit of all of our citizens. This year, we have a new web portal, as we all know, called Open Troy, where you can review important financial documentation online. I've initiated meetings with our city manager, Mr. Culpepper, to begin reviewing the feasibility of what I call second-generation reporting, so that our Open Troy data can be organized into reports, so that the taxpayers can analyze the information in a more meaningful way. It was a great honor that Troy has been chosen only the second city in America to host the international festival called Who's My Neighbor? And that's on July 7, 2012, on the grounds of the Zion Christian Church. The Mayor-for-a-Day essay contest is a huge success. The positive input has been refreshing. Troy has been chosen to be the site of the National Youth Association's 16-and-under Hockey Tournament in April of 2013. This is a significant accomplishment that has taken place this year. With all of this and more, and with our being the safest city with a population of 75,000 or more, Troy is becoming the envy of the state of Michigan. Please join me in celebrating the many wonderful reasons to live, work, dine, and play in Troy, Michigan. I'm confident that this council will continue to work together to improve the legislative environment, so that our businesses and residents can flourish and succeed. Thank you. Are there any other council comments? Okay. There are no postponed items. We can now move to regular business. We have no mayoral appointments, so we'll move to city council appointments. Mayor Protem McGinnis, you have the floor.
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated. For the Building Code Board of Appeals, a term that's per ordinance, Michael Culpepper, the interim city manager. Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees, retiree, health care benefits, plan, and trust, term that's per ordinance, Michael Culpepper, interim city manager. Historic District Commission for a term expiring May 15, 2015, Doris Schuster. Traffic Committee, term expiring January 31, 2013, Stavon Popovic.
Is there a second?
Word.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion, please. A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Appointments are made. Congratulations, Mr. Culpepper and others. Moving to the mayoral nominations. At the recommendation of Mrs. Stephanie Bergeron, the president of Walsh College, who does not wish to be reappointed, I would like to nominate Mr. David Shields to the Local Development Finance Authority. And I would also like to nominate Mr. Paul Hoof and Mr. John Sharp to that Local Development Finance Authority. I would also, at this time, like to nominate Mr. Ed Kempin to the Planning Commission. To finish out the term, expiring December 31, 2013, that has been vacated by the resignation of Mr. Mark Maxwell. His resignation was precipitated upon a real estate opportunity that him and his wife could not pass by. I'd like to move all four mayoral nominations forward at this same time. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of Troy hereby forwards the above-mentioned names to serve on the boards and committees as indicated at the next regularly-scheduled council meeting on July 9 for action.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Is there discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Maxwell, for your service to our great city. Next are city council nominations. Mayor Protem McGinnis, again, you have the floor.
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby forwards the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated to the next regular city council meeting for action. The only one that I'm moving forward is the Liquor Advisory Committee. I am moving to reappoint both of the student reps, Pappas and Shirlink, for terms expiring July 31, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. We do have a request for a closed session regarding pending litigation. Would someone please move this resolution forward? Councilman Fleming?
It is resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E. Pending litigation, Margaret Black versus City of Troy.
Support. Moved by Councilman Fleming, supported by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. The closed session will immediately follow the conclusion of our agenda items. Next on the agenda is item I-04, Bid Waiver Security Access Control Upgrade. Would someone like to move the resolution forward? Mayor Protem McGinnis?
I will move the resolution as printed.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item I-5, 2011-2012 Budget Amendment Number One, Transferring Funds in the Amount of $550,000 from the Reserve for Tax Tribunal Refunds. Would someone like to move the resolution forward? Councilman Teetz?
Could we have a discussion before we go forward?
Move a second.
You move it forward, and then we'll discuss.
Please.
Would you like to move it forward, Councilman Teetz?
Someone else can. I'm not... I don't have good answers to my questions, so...
Okay. Mayor Protem McGinnis?
I will move the resolution as printed.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? Mr. Councilman Teetz?
Mr. Darling, could you give a little bit of background why this is necessary? I read what was put on the council table, and I guess I walked away more confused, because it said, on one hand, this amendment to spend essentially half a million dollars was anticipated, including the projections, but yet we're still making this amendment to the budget. And I...
Mayor?
That's my question.
Members of the council, thank you. Excellent question. What we're proposing tonight is if we pass the budget in 2012, okay, for the 2012 budget. But inside that was a budget for $200,000 for tax tribunal refunds, something we really don't have a lot of control of. During the course of action, and typically this time of year, just before the end of the fiscal year, if we're looking over something and it appears that we're going to be over budget in a particular area, we'll ask for a budget amendment in order to be in compliance with state requirements. And that's why it usually happens this time of year versus during the year. We try and wait until we get a view of everything, and if there's more than one area we need to discuss, we'll cover it all at once. When I was discussing the amount in our projections during our budget sessions, and should remember, I noted in several of my presentations that we are going to be over budget in particular areas because of these tax refunds, and they were part of my projections when we went through the budget process. At this point, I'm just making it official. I'd like to ask for an amendment for the 2012 budget of approximately $550,000. In fact, again, as I said, the budget's $200,000. We currently have activity of... Now, it's $835,000, as opposed when I put this memo together on the 6th of June. It's actually gone up. So I'm asking to be in compliance with state requirements that we amend the budget for $550,000 to match our actual incurred expenditures.
Did you have a follow-up question?
Yes. This probably is best addressed by the assessor. It seems like we're off quite a ways on our tax tribunal hearings, or we've lost quite a few hearings. Was this anticipated? I mean, am I missing something? That we... Our assessing was off, according to what the tax tribunal came back and said.
Mr. Lucari?
Is that incorrect or correct, or...
Yeah, that's... I don't want to say you're incorrect.
Feel free if I'm incorrect.
No. The issue becomes... is the timing of the cases. Back in 2008, the tribunal had a 40,000-case backlog. A new chief judge came in and vowed to clear that up within three years. Normally, this process would take considerably longer to have all of these hearings. And then, obviously, every time another year goes by, you've added to it. So as, for instance, right now, at this point in time, we have 400 years' worth of appeals open. I have no way of telling when they'll be docketed, when they'll be settled. Our particular history is that we don't settle anywhere near what the actual asking price is. In other words, when someone files an appeal, they're required by law to state what they think that property is worth. It's never anywhere close to that. But again, the issue that you have now, and this happens every year, it's just not in these large-dollar amounts, is that we don't have any control over the timing. We did settle in the last two years, I think I settled over 325 cases. In a normal year, before this recession hit us, we might settle 25. So I mean, the volume has just increased phenomenally. And the bulk of that money that Mr. Darling is asking to transfer over, we do budget. And again, if, depending on the timing of the issue, we may be under budget, we may be over budget. But the bulk of that money that he's asking you for is all commercial and industrial appeals, and that's a direct result of the vacancy that we're experiencing. We have probably 300, 400 residential appeals at any one point in time, but the dollar values are nominal. I mean, we very rarely lose a residential appeal, and when we do, if it costs the city $100, that would be a lot. When you have an appeal where there's $10 or $12 million in taxable value at stake, you can see the huge amount of difference in revenue. And that's where we're at at this point in time. On the upside, as of last Friday, the deadline for filing on commercial industrial appeals is May 31. As of last Friday, I had 56 appeals for this year. Last year, at this point in time, I had 260. So the... This is dropping off. As the market improves, or as the market bottoms out, there is not a lot to complain about out there. So it's dropped off dramatically. I mean, it's less than, you know, 20% of what it was just last year alone. And the year before that, I had well over 300. So this is all a timing issue and the fact that the tribunal is trying to get their docket cleared up as fast as they possibly can. So what they do is they force you into a stipulation, or they force you to go to trial. Trial is much more costly, and we very rarely go to trial. If I can just add on to that, to just make sure that we understand, this is an expenditure or a charge-back situation for previous years. This has nothing to do with our assessing and how we budget revenues. Again, those are right on.
Councilman Fleming?
Maybe you can just clarify, Mr. Darling. And we had a side discussion on this, I know, but this question just came to mind since Councilman Teetz brought it up. We've just gone through the budget a month ago, and you alluded to, you made estimates here. Do we not have any way of knowing what the results of this tax tribunal was going to be? That we could actually put it in the budget a month ago rather than having to amend the budget?
That's not true. I mean, again, we budgeted the 2013 budget process that we went through, and again, we've accounted for this increase in... our projected increase in activity in this area. Okay? Again, part of that, in your budget documents, I gave a projection of where we thought we'd be in 2012. Part of that projection included this level of increase of tax refunds. Again, all we're doing is basically crossing the t's and dotting the i's of the 2012 budget as it was originally adopted over a year ago before we had this increase of activity and recognizing that.
Mr. Lucari?
And if I might just add to that, this activity here will decrease the expenditure in your future budget. This activity occurred sooner than we thought, so, you know, realistically, it'll be less for the coming year.
Thank you. Any other questions? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes. Motion passes. Item I-6, Synthetic Drugs, K2 Spice Bath Salts, et cetera. I wonder if someone would like to read the resolution. Councilman Fleming?
Yeah. I think we need to move this, and I believe this one needs to be read.
I believe so, too.
I'll do so. Whereas due to recent media events and education and legislation, there has been an increased public awareness of the dangers of synthetic drugs, including but not limited to spice, K2, bath salts, synthetic cocaine, MXE, and DMAA. And whereas the ingestion or use of one of these synthetic drugs can lead to any or all of the following medical conditions: death, stroke, seizure, convulsion, irreversible brain damage, catatonic behavior, tremors, speech impediments, heart palpitations, hallucinations, physical paralysis, kidney injury, panic attacks, and amputations. And whereas the ingestion or use of these synthetic drugs has recently led to violent, bizarre, destructive, and harmful behavior, which has led to homicide and suicide. And whereas there are manufacturers of synthetic drugs that constantly change the chemical compositions of these substances in an effort to circumvent the definitions of controlled substances under both federal and state laws, which criminalize possession, use, sale, and distribution of controlled substances, as well as driving under the influence of such synthetic substances. And whereas these types of synthetic drugs are currently packaged as benign items and marketed in a manner that is designed to encourage our youth and other persons to purchase and consume these types of synthetic drugs, since these drugs can be found in convenience stores and over the internet. And whereas there has been a temporary federal ban on these types of synthetic drugs due to their dangerous and addictive propensities, and there have also been recent successful efforts to pass permanent federal and state laws that address these types of synthetic drugs by including them as illegal Schedule I drugs. And whereas the city of Troy... Let me back up here. ...is committed to the eficeration of these types of synthetic drugs in our community and the surrounding communities, and has actively participated within the 52nd-Four Judicial District Court, the city of Claussen, the Troy Community Coalition, Oakland County, Troy merchants, and the public in the education and awareness of these synthetic drugs. And many Troy merchants have pledged not to sell these types of synthetic drugs, as evidenced by the attached press release and as included on a website furthering this commitment. The website is nospicetroyclaussen.org. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the city of Troy joins together with many other government entities, businesses, and nonprofit organizations and task forces in pledging their support for the federal, state, and local legislation and other actions that combat the use and sale of synthetic drugs such as K2, spice, bath salts, and others. This includes but is not limited to pending federal legislation, pending state legislation, actions of the Oakland County Board of Health, and others. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be forwarded to all elected persons representing the city of Troy requesting the exercise of all diligent efforts to combat the use and sale of these types of synthetic drugs.
Thank you. May I have a second? Support. Moved by Councilman Fleming, supported by Mayor Protem McGinnis. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes our regular business. We now move to consent agenda items. Are there any items that council would like removed for discussion? Councilman Teetz?
I'd like to remove J-4C, please.
All right. And could we have someone move the resolution forward on the remaining items?
Just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. You want to remove?
I'd also like to exclude J-4B.
A. So we could have someone move the resolution forward without J-4C and J-4D?
B.
I'm sorry?
B.
J-4B you're asking for? I apologize. J-4C and J-4B. Councilman Fleming?
Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of items J-4B and J-4C.
Second? Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Teetz. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bitner.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll return to item J-4C first. Councilman Teetz, you have the floor.
This is regarding the renewal of the MML membership, and I'm not sure how much support I'll actually get, but I'm going to be voting no on this. MML, in my opinion, there are two aspects that are mentioned in the resolution. The one is educational, the other is advocacy. And MML, the Michigan Municipal League, part of its advocacy is certainly not in the best interests of the business owners of Troy and the taxpayers of Troy.
Mayor, may I address that? First of all, I should disclose that I am a member of the Legal Defense Fund. I am on the board of the Legal Defense Fund and have been. I'm also an officer of the Michigan Association of Municipal Attorney, so I want to disclose that first. Yes, we have. There have been several occasions. The last one, I believe, was the Papadellis lawsuit, where the Michigan Municipal League did file an amicus brief on our behalf. However, there are so many issues that are brought to the Michigan Municipal League's Legal Defense Fund that affect all of the municipalities among the whole state of Michigan. And really, the goal in deciding whether or not to file an amicus brief on any of the pending cases is whether or not there is statewide implication to Michigan municipalities. So we have benefited from that. There are union cases that have gone, there are property cases that have gone, election cases, I can name almost everything that would affect municipalities.
Thank you. Discussion? Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Did you have a follow-up question?
Did you have a follow-up question?
I had one question and then one comment. Do we also, is it a requirement for us to be a member of the MML to take part in, is it the workers' comp? Is there the insurance that we have through MML?
Yes, I believe we do, yes. And it is required to, in order to participate in the Legal Defense Fund, I believe that, I mean, it absolutely is required to be a member.
And I wish I could be a little bit more articulate in what I'm trying to explain, but I believe we've obtained an insurance program through MML, at least for the last several years that I've been on council, because we're a member and we are able to use that benefit. And if I remember clearly, there was a lot of research done on whether or not that was the most cost-efficient method for us to obtain that coverage, and it was. So for us to no longer have the membership, we would then have to reevaluate that insurance protection, and I do think we've already given it some thought as to whether or not it's the most cost-effective. So I would have a big concern with that. I would have a big concern with losing the ability to have access to the legal protection that we've been given through the MML. And I think in response to Councilman Teetz's comments regarding particular positions that the MML may or may not have advocated on in the past, the thing that I've always found to be extremely useful is the wealth of information that they provide, the level of education that they provide for people that would like to partake. I know that many people that are sitting up here on this council took part in many of the newly-elected official academies that they have that provided us with a wealth of information. Just a few months ago, we utilized the MML to obtain a list of names and qualifications for possible interim city managers. We were able to go with someone that had been here in the city of Troy, but that was something that we were looking at closely to provide us opportunities. So I think in terms of giving us information, the best thing that we could possibly have is that information so that we can be more informed ourselves and take action in a way that we choose. I don't think MML is forcing anyone to take a particular position in their community, but I think that they provide a huge array of education and programs, and is a wonderful wealth of information for us to utilize. So I think that that's something important that we should consider, but more important than that, because I know some council members don't utilize some of those things, the fact that the city utilizes two very important programs through the MML, for us to not pay to become members would force us to reevaluate those two situations, and I wouldn't be comfortable doing that. So I would support continuing our membership.
Councilman Henderson?
I tend to agree with Councilman Teetz. However, you know, I understand that, you know, some of the cost savings that we have through, you know, being a participant with them. One of the things that really sticks in my craw is one of the very first emails I received from was a training session on how to sell a tax increase to the people. And I just fundamentally disagree with that type of shove a tax increase down a people's throat at all costs. So I will probably vote yes for this while I bite my finger.
Thank you. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner? Or do we move it forward?
You need to move in second.
Okay, we need to move it forward. Would someone like to move the motion forward? Would that be Councilman Teetz, being as he asked for it to be pulled out of?
It couldn't be anyone.
I want to move it forward.
Okay. Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Resolved that payment is authorized for annual membership dues to the Michigan Municipal League for a time period of May first, 2012, through April thirtieth, 2013, in the amount of eleven thousand three-hundred-and-one dollars.
A second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
No.
Motion passes. Mayor, I mean, Councilman Fleming?
Yeah. Just a question on this resolution B. Do we have anyone, we first had to determine if we were going to be a member, and then determine if we were going to get the membership rights, but is there anyone planning from this council to go to the Michigan Municipal League's annual convention in October? Because this is a resolution authorizing travel and approval to expend funds.
I asked City Manager Cole Pepper for some background data, how much money had been spent in the past three years for this membership, or, I mean, for this participation. In 2009, the city spent eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. In 2010, they spent six-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. In 2011, we spent two-thousand-fifty-seven dollars. I am looking at attending because I think that networking is a very good opportunity to learn and grow. There's some new mayor classes that I would like to take, and in fact, whenever there's an advocacy issue, I think that we should try to advance our perspective, so maybe have an opportunity to change the positions of thought. So I don't think it's that great of an expense, although I would like to see us spend the money differently, and that's why I voted no, if we did away with it. But being as we're going to continue with it, we might as well take advantage of it, and it's a small price.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I've traditionally tried to attend the conferences that I was able to coordinate with my work schedule, whether it's the annual conference, or they have a Capitol Conference that's in Lansing. I hadn't made a decision, but I was hoping that that option would be open. We've always had representation from the city of Troy over the years. It's changed from council member to council member. We've had participation from our city managers and our mayors over the years. I think Troy is a very big part of the MML. A previous council member, Robin Beltrameini, served as president of the organization, which is an honor, and she represented us very well, and I think the other members of council and mayors and city managers that have attended the conference in the past had done the same. So I'm hoping that we can still be active in the group and participate, and I think you're absolutely right, Mayor, to not only get information, but to make our positions known and our needs known, so that when there is something that we need from the MML, we get a benefit for our membership, and we're able to ask for that through the relationships that we build. So I hadn't made a decision about going. I really don't know what my schedule will look like for that time, but I was hoping that the option would be open, and if there's a need to limit expenses, I would be fine for that. But obviously, I would like to have the option open so that somebody can attend from the city.
Councilman Fleming?
Based on that discussion, there are no other comments. I'll move the resolution forward, resolve that Troy city, that Troy council members are authorized to attend the Michigan Municipal League's annual convention on October third through the fifth, 2012, in Mackinac Island, Michigan, in accordance to the counting procedures of the city of Troy.
Second?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Any other discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no memorandums or future council agenda items, so we'll move to council referrals. I ask that three items be placed on referral. Item L-one is a copy of a miscellaneous resolution number one-two-one-three-four regarding the Oakland County Board of Commissioner's support for electric utility customers to opt out of smart meter installations without unwarranted or excessive penalty, as commented on by Attorney General Bill Shute. After listening to the public comments made earlier this evening, I would like to ask that council consider a resolution in support of this opt-out plan. Should we work on a resolution?
Yeah, I would second that. Reading the resolution, I'm sorry, lost here, but reading the resolution cites quite a few comments from the Attorney General, and essentially says that folks are opting out and that we're not taking any particular stance, but just to say essentially, this is a choice of the homeowner or business or whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I have a comment. Obviously, we received some information from the public in our public comment this evening, and as council members, I speak for myself, but I think the rest of you would agree, we've received some feedback as well from other people, at least in the form of emails. And while I wouldn't mind having further discussion on this, I'm not ready to move a resolution tonight. It's my understanding, and I think the city attorney would verify, but there is a process going forward here. This has been ongoing, and I believe that there was a time for public comment. That time is now closed, but that we're waiting for a report and a recommendation to come from the state. I believe that that deadline is going to be June twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, or somewhere around that time. So I would like to have that information before we move forward and make a formal resolution. I know that that's right around the corner, so I'm hoping that doesn't hold the issue up. But I'd like to make sure we're moving at a time that's right for us to take some action, and I would hate to spend a lot of our time and resources, or resources of the city attorney, before we get that recommendation on the chance that it gives us something that's going to change our opinion.
That would come in before the next meeting?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, right now, it is before the Michigan Public Service Commission. The Michigan Public Service Commission, after taking all of the public input, as well as the responses from the utilities, after conducting scientific research, analyzing scientific research, they are going to prepare a report. And then once we have that report, certainly, we can include that in a next council packet, and then council can give direction as to whether or not they want to proceed with taking any type of action on that staff recommendation. Again, the time for public comment has expired, Councilwoman McGinnis, Mayor Proton McGinnis is correct on that, but, you know, there will be an opportunity for us to review the staff report.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Slater?
I'd like to see that report, myself, too. I'm not opposed to the resolution, but I'd like to see that report before we do a resolution on this, myself, too.
Will we have it delivered to us when it's available in June? At the end of June this month?
Madam Mayor, I would include that in the next packet for council consideration. I also can provide to you what some of your potential options are, if that's something that council, the majority of council directs me to do.
I would like that. Would you agree? Okay. Thank you. The second item, L-two A, was the original proclamation submitted late to the last city council meeting. It was requested that more work be done on it. It was reviewed and refined by City Attorney Bloom. We passed the resolution under regular business, item I-six, so this item can be dropped from discussion, but I did want to take a moment to thank Mr. Cole Pepper again for his swift response to my request to get a foundation for this resolution on the table.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add one thing to that. I'd like to indicate that that was initiated by you to bring that item forward. I did not invent that, that you brought that forward. We worked with it, and it definitely was not in competition with tonight's item, and it was just the basis for getting started.
Thank you. Thank you. The last item, the third item, L-two B, was brought to council referral simply to complement the Oakland County Board of Commissioners for their proactive resolution supporting Senate Bill ten-eighty-two, House Bill fifty-seven-fourteen, and other legislation that proposes to criminalize the sale, display, distribution, and/or possession of what is referred to as synthetic marijuana. This was passed by the city commission on June seventh, 2012, by a vote of twenty-five to zero. Everyone in the community needs to be complimented, quite frankly. Once we realized the dangers of these compounds, we have really prioritized our responses and have swiftly addressed this blatant assault on our children's health and well-being. The manufacturers of these products should be ashamed of themselves, quite frankly. So I want to thank everyone in the community for their proactive responses. Did anyone else have any? Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, there's a report in our package, Department Reports, N-two C, Emergency Medical Service, 2011 Annual Report, and I've noticed in the audience, we've had two members from Alliance Mobile Health here. It's an excellent report, and just wanted to acknowledge them for that, and don't know if there's anything else that needs to be said, but excellent report. We've got Lori Thiel here, the CEO of Alliance Mobile Health, doing a good job there, but I don't know if you came to speak, or just to be, but thank you. I didn't have any questions. Excellent report, and thank you for that report.
Actually, we're moving to council comments before reports, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Are there council comments on any other items? Councilman Teetz?
Yes. Last, or two weeks ago, someone came to the podium and wanted to talk about the refuse expenses and comparing it to Shelby Township, our neighboring township to the east. Tuesday morning, I spoke with the city manager and some other folks in the city, asking them for a comparison between city Troy and Shelby Township. What happened was Shelby Township, their rates were increasing, they went out to bid, they found a different contractor at a lower rate, as well as the contractor agreed to give a ten percent discount to senior citizens. Their rates in Shelby Township are still higher than they are in the city of Troy. That said, I would be curious, and I'd like to see additional research to see about if we would bid out our services to, I believe it was Rizzo, and see if we could get a further discount as far as the service goes. Maybe I'm totally wrong. Maybe it's spinning our wheels, but I would actually be curious to see and get your thoughts right now.
Okay, my first thought is, I don't know what the time for expiration of our current contract happens to be, so I wouldn't want to comment on that immediately.
Councilman Slater?
I believe we belong to consortium, that that's mainly why we get the rate that we get. If we were independent on our own, I don't think we would reap the benefits of belonging. Plus, we get a number of votes because of the size of our city, so personally, I think that would be probably a futile endeavor.
Senator Cole Pepper?
Madam Mayor, we could, short of a formal bid, do some polling and find out what some of our nearby communities are paying through that particular company directly, just to give us some additional idea before we go too far.
And that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for a formal bid process or saying we drop out of Sacra, but I would like to know what our neighbors are paying, if indeed, we're getting a
we would bid out our services to, I believe it was Rizzo, and see if, if we could get a further discount as far as the service goes. Maybe I'm totally wrong. Maybe it's spinning our wheels, but, but I, I would actually be curious to see and get your thoughts right now.
Okay, my, my first thought is, I don't know what the time for expiration of our current contract happens to be, so I wouldn't want to comment on that immediately.
Councilman Slater?
I believe we belong to consortium, that, that's mainly why we get the rate that we get. If we were independent on our own, I don't think we would reap the benefits of, of belonging. Plus, we get a, a number of votes because of the size of our city, so I, personally, I think that would be probably a futile endeavor.
Senator Culpepper?
Madam Mayor, we could, short of a formal bid, do some polling and find out what some of our nearby communities are paying through that particular company directly, just to give us some additional idea before we go too far.
And, and that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for a formal bid process, or saying we drop out of Sacra, but I, I would like to know what our neighbors are paying, if indeed, we're getting a better deal, and after reviewing what we pay versus what Shelby Township pays, you know, we truly, at this point, appear to be getting a better deal than our neighbors. So that, that's what I would be curious to, to find out.
Councilman Henderson?
We finished, sir? I'd just like to throw this out there as well. When we were in the, the budget sessions, it, the consortium was brought to our attention, and it, it looked like a, a big decline in costs immediately, and then all of a sudden, the costs, year by year, have gone escalating to the point where they are now. And there was really no solid answer as to, you know, have we given away our buying power as a community by belonging to a consortium? Whereas if we were independently negotiating these contracts, could, could Troy, being the, the large community that we are, do a much better job individually, rather than as part of a, a bigger picture? I, you know, I would like to have at least some comparisons done there as well.
I would actually like to see if there would be a possibility for a southeastern Michigan consortium instead of a South Oakland County, so that we expand the consortium, and therefore get the benefit of, what is that? If you have a lot of people...
Economies of scale.
What is it? Yeah, economies of scale. Thank you very much, Councilman Teetz. I would like to expand the consortium, actually, if we could look at that option as well.
Well, why don't we start with this survey of our general neighbors and cities that are similar to Troy in size? I would be personally a little skeptical in going into Wayne County and considering joining with them on various things at this particular time, but that's just my opinion.
Any other discussion? Mayor Protem McGinnis?
I just had an announcement for council comments, and then I did have something I wanted to say, but it's listed under report, so I'll do this first. There are several summer camps that are available, and I know with school just recently letting out, there may be parents looking for fun and exciting and time-consuming things for their kids to do over the summer, and there are quite a few options here in the City of Troy that I wanted to make people aware of. Through the Troy Recreation Department, there are over 25 camps that are slated throughout the summer, with varying times and dates, and that you can learn a lot more about all of these camps by either calling the Troy Recreation Department at (248) 524-3484, or visiting our website at troymi.gov. There are also camps available through the Historic Village, the Troy Historic Village. You can check their website at www.sommer.troyhistoricvillage.org, or you can contact the Historic Village and get specific information for camps that are available for children ages 7 to 12. The Family Aquatic Center is also going to be open for the season, and the Troy Boys and Girls Club has opening for young people ages 6 and over at their summer camp programs. You can contact the Boys and Girls Club at (248) 689-1687.
Thank you very much. Councilman Teetz?
Another, another thing. I'd like to work with the city clerk and, and attorney, but bring this up to the entire council right now. Several months ago, we went through the rules and procedures, and I, at that point, brought up a suggestion that, at the point where council comments currently are, we would have council comments on the agenda, and then later on, before the referrals, we would have council comments on things that are not on the agenda. I would propose that each of those times, folks would be given three minutes to talk. They could speak at one of them, or both of them, according to what they need to, what they want to discuss, or, or air their grievances, or whatnot, for a couple reasons. Number one, we're here on, on agenda, both literally on an agenda, but also to do the city's business, and I really think that we need to refocus as, as far as a council, and also as a city, to say, we want to work on the agenda of the city first, and then we can discuss other issues. Tonight, we had three people that addressed issues on tonight's agenda, and the agenda itself lasted approximately 40 minutes, 42 minutes. So folks wouldn't have to wait around for hours, and moreover, I think it sends the right message to the community that the council needs to focus on doing their job, and I think that's something we all want to do, and, and do the best we can. So I want to bring this up in front of the city council at this point, and I'll be trying to work and discuss this with, with the appropriate parties, so that perhaps next week, we can have a, dig deeper into the issue. And I think that's all.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Teetz, could I also be on your committee to discuss that?
It was not exclusive. It's very inclusive, and any other staff that wants to join, absolutely. I apologize.
Councilman Henderson?
If we can maybe impose on Chief Mayor for a half a minute to talk about L2A and the PR release on K2, and what the police department did over a week ago. The effort should be applauded, finally. I say the effort should be applauded. I appreciate it.
I, some of the things I'd like to take credit for, but it was a group response. It's been addressed tonight that this was a community reaction to a problem. The coalition was very active in this. There was many other political parties that were active in this. It was a group effort. I was very glad that, once the police officers that I signed to it, I told them we needed to get out to our establishments and gain voluntary compliance, they were able to achieve that in one day. We have, they, they, I gave to the police officers, they designed just this little placard that can go inside a store, or be put on the store's door. Other jurisdictions have done something similar. We've had 43 establishments, our press release said 42, we located some other ones, that have signed an agreement, a pledge not to sell K2 spice, and then we have two that haven't signed yet. They've agreed not to sell it in spirit, but they have to go through their upper management to get it done, because they're corporate stores. So we are monitoring the problem. It's going very well. Hopefully, that answers your, the point.
Thank you.
Is there any other question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Councilman?
Actually, compliment to yourself, and, and the other officers who are involved. And what I particularly appreciate is, I think, we often talk about we're only a reactive, and, but this is a truly a proactive thing, where we're celebrating good behavior by our businesses, and shaming those businesses that still want to sell this stuff to, to kids. Where can people, what is the website where people could find those businesses that are selling this to kids?
It's in the press release. It's, I was read by the Councilman Fleming there. I have it.
I apologize, but...
No, no problem. It's nospicetroyclawson, one word, dot org. So it's nospicetroyclawson.org.
And on there, you can see that the businesses that are still, you know, have this on their shelves, and I'm sure this is being updated, and I would encourage you to go to those business owners, and tell them that this isn't part of good business, or community-based business, and then, secondly, you can decide how you want to spend your money. But I was happy to see all the, all the gas stations that I go to are on the right side of the law on this one. So I encourage, you know, yourself and your neighbors to do that as well, for the community.
I would ask that if anyone does come across a Troy establishment that is still selling this, to call the police department, because they have pledged us not to be selling it. So at this juncture, based upon the police officers that are in the field, there are no establishments in Troy selling this. The law should be in effect. I believe the governor signed the law today, make it effective very soon, so as soon as that happens, I would definitely encourage them to call the police department, because we'll take enforcement action, because we've moved beyond voluntary compliance at this point. It'll be, if it's, when it's against the law, we will take criminal action on it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Well, we're kind of bouncing back and forth, but we're moving to the report section. Mayor Protem McGinnis, you mentioned you had a report.
I did. We, you know, this particular meeting agenda, we didn't have as many reports from our boards and committees as we normally do, and I'm sure that's just timing, but we did have the most recent minutes from the Planning Commission, special study meeting on May 22nd. And I guess it's a question, a comment and a question. I know in the past, city council has orchestrated joint meetings with the Planning Commission for various reasons, and, and maybe right at this exact moment, it may be not the best timing, since we're going to be adding a new member to the Planning Commission, and probably establishing a chair, a new chairperson shortly, but sometime in the future, because the Planning Commission is having some in-depth discussion about their goals, and their plan to revisit the master plan after five years has passed, so they can review it and see how we're, we're doing in terms of our goals. I feel like this might be a time that would be beneficial both to the council and to the Planning Commission, to consider looking at a joint meeting, so we could have something like this, a special study session. I know that many of the things that were discussed here in these minutes, and at the last meeting, I think would be very important for the council to take part in the discussion and weigh in, so I, I just wanted to bring that up. Maybe the timing is not 100% perfect at this point, while they're going to be going through some transition, but I wanted to put that out there to the rest of the group. If there's feedback that can be given now, that would be great, and if not, I'll probably just follow up a little more on what the actual procedure would be for scheduling that kind of meeting.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask Mr. Miller if he has, I know he works with the Planning Commission quite a bit, if he has some history he might want to indicate regarding the particular times that was best to meet with the planning group?
Well, in the past, it's, it's been a few years since we've had a joint meeting, and usually, there's a major topic, but as Ms. Mayor Protem McGinnis mentioned, that the Planning and Enabling Act does require that we take a look at our master plan after five years, and then we have to make a determination whether or not to amend it, or, or look at to amend it. So that looks like it's a, it's an important time to maybe get together, but it, you know, it's, it's a difficult task usually to schedule that, you know, so it has, I, my recommendation is that you, you know, schedule it well in advance of when you want to do it, so that we can get it scheduled and be able to get everyone there, and then identify what you want to talk about, if it's something more than just the master plan.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
And I should probably know the answer to this, this is more of a procedural question, but would this be something that has to come from a formal resolution, that we'd like to schedule a joint meeting, and then a date would be set? I know it needs to be far into the future, and, and that seems like a very good idea to do that, but is it something that would need to come through a formal resolution that I would put in council referrals, perhaps, at a meeting somewhere down the line?
I don't believe it'd have to come through a formal resolution. However, if there is a feeling, feelings on two sides of the issue, I think it'd be nice to direct staff with a, a vote, or something like that.
And just to supplement that, after you've, you know, after, if there is consensus to have such a joint meeting, you will actually need to either specifically call it with a resolution, or the mayor would have to call a meeting. It can be done either of those ways, but you'd have to indicate what the date and time were, in order to comply with the Open Meetings Act, but I, I think you were looking for consensus, and, and there's probably consensus. By the nodding of the heads, it looks like there, there may be some majority consensus.
Councilman Slater?
I'm not opposed to the meeting, but I, I, I don't think it would be beneficial to do that for a while. We have to pick a city manager here in the next couple of months. It's going to take up a lot of our time. It's summer, scheduling is, I would look for something after the summer, personally, and after we get a new permanent city manager. I don't think we would want to do that before we have a, have a selection.
I think that's a good observation. Thank you, Councilman Slater. Mr. Miller?
Madam Mayor, and in the meantime, what I'll do is I'll ask Planning Director Brent Savinat to, to have the Planning Commission discuss this between themselves, to identify topics they would like to interact with you, so that we're well, well-prepared if, if we do this in the future, when it's called, and then, so then staff can prepare for it, because as we all know, we just, we, if we do conduct a meeting like this, we'd like to have a good, productive agenda, not just get together just to get together.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem McGinnis. Are there any other comments on the report section? Councilman Henderson, I saw your hand go up first.
N2B, Review of Outdoor Water Use Restrictions Ordinance. If we could have staff report on that, I, I know the weather's getting hotter, we've all driven by Rogue, sprinklers going off at 10:00 in the morning, so serves as a good reminder.
Madam Mayor, we do have the director of the department. He could give you a quick overview now, instead of waiting three weeks for another meeting.
That would be fine.
If you'd like to have him.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been a few years now, and I, and I think the tail-tail sign of the cooperation from the community, and I would point out that when this ordinance came about, there was real concern, and I think Mr. Councilman Fleming probably can remember, that there was real concern about us coming out and ticketing people, and the, the whole premise of this ordinance, as provided to us, was to educate before we regulate through any kind of fines, or fees, or tickets. And whenever we have locations that you see, if you can give us addresses, we send out letters to these individuals, and we've been very productive. Now, if you look at that chart that we put in there, you can actually see very well that we've shifted into the exempt area, which is before 5:00 AM, where it really doesn't matter how much water we use between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM. That, that was critical in our rates over the last three years. We, as part of our rates, were 15% over those three years, less than what the average was for other communities. Now, that isn't 100% contributed to what we've done, but it had an effect on it. That 15% less, in terms of dollars to the community, is about $1 million less that we're paying to the city of Detroit. That's significant. Now, again, I'm not saying that this ordinance is 100% of that, because there's other things that contribute, like our aggressive water main replacement programs, and our aggressive maintenance programs on the system, other than replacement, but it, together as a package, has significantly reduced what we pay to water and sewer to the city of Detroit, and again, what residents pay to us. So, you know, with that being said, we've each year expanded some of our education programs. Last year, we noticed that there were certain subdivisions that had a higher incidence of sprinklers that were running during the day. We don't send people out just to look for sprinklers, but in our daily jobs, looking at other issues in the community, we take down those addresses, note the time, and then we send out letters to these folks. We have exemptions. Some of those addresses that the sprinklers are running, they aren't automated. They actually are a hand valve that people turn on. Those people have exemptions for that. We have a record of all of those exemptions, so it's important to understand that, please let us know, so that we can contact those people and continue our education program.
For, for the record, what is the policy, just so that people watching can, between what and what should...
Underground automated sprinkling systems can only be operated from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM in the morning. And on the graph that you have been provided in the packet, you'll see that between those times, we've actually increased our water consumption over what it was in the past for those three years previous to the ordinance, just shows the effectiveness of it. But 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM is when we want you to water with the automated sprinkling systems.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to indicate, or give a thank you to the newspapers in the area for helping us out in this particular area. Every time we've asked them to place a notice governing the, or explaining the water situation, they very ambitiously and very helpfully put it in the papers to help us out.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other reports? Councilman Slater?
I see Nino standing in the back there, and I'd like to make a comment about N5, the report comparing the city assessing versus the county, and I would hope, after reading the report, that everybody is now satisfied that we do it cheaper than if we outsourced to the county, and maybe we can put this issue to bed, so that our assessing department can be relieved that, that we're not looking at outsourcing. I would, I would like to make that report to them, if we could, tonight.
Mr. Lucari? Did you want to say a few words? Mr. Lucari, did you want to say a few words?
I would like to tell him, but does anybody still have an issue after seeing the report? Because I think I'm satisfied. Okay?
Thank you. Councilman Slater? Well, it looks like that concludes our report section. There are no study items, and so we'll move into closed session. I want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for coming to the council meeting, for watching it on TV, for participating, and I look forward to seeing you all again soon. This portion of the meeting is now adjourned. We'll move into closed session.